Good evening and welcome to the August eleventh, twenty twenty-five meeting of Lawrence County Council. Call this meeting to order. We'll have our invocation by Councilmember Clark followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Oh Lord, oh God, ah excellent, so thank you. Father God, we say thank you. Thank you for this day. Thank you for blessing us once more and again. Father, we just come to say thank you for all that you have done and all that you're gonna do in our life. Father, I ask you to be with us and as you trusted us to further responsibility. Lord, I ask you to just help us, guide us, and lead us on this journey. Give us insight without oversight, discernment without desolation, fairness without favoritism. Give us the strength to stay even with we have to stand alone. It is better to fail than something right than to win in something wrong. Guide this meeting and remind us that all that we do here will be rebuked in your counsel and your hold of our last days. These and all blessings, I ask in Christ's name I pray.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to reiterate for which today is a nation of good God and goodness one with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of tonight is approval of our agenda for August eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six zero. Next item is approval of our minutes from our July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five regular session. Okay, wait. Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes from July fourteenth, please raise your hands. Six zero. This evening, we have a special recognition that I will read in just a moment. Fresh off the presses. This is a proclamation on behalf of the county of Lawrence, South Carolina. It's with deep pride that we, the Lawrence County Council, do hereby proclaim with extreme honor Emergency Management Awareness Month. Whereas emergencies and disasters can occur unexpectedly posing significant threats to life, property, and environment. And whereas local emergency managers across all sectors, community leaders, as well as state and federal agencies dedicate countless hours to developing preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation programs to protect lives and property of all persons living in Lawrence County. And whereas emergency managers are charged with establishing and maintaining the capabilities necessary to effect direct, coordinate, and support emergency and disaster response and recovery efforts. And whereas the mission areas of prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery align with the core capabilities identified in the National Preparedness Goal. And whereas Lawrence County emergency managers serve this county by responding to emergencies and disasters, demonstrating commitment, compassion, and professionalism, protecting the public. And whereas the efforts of the Lawrence County Emergency Management Team have helped many citizens recover, rebuild, and become more resilient in the face of adversity. Now therefore, the Lawrence County Council do hereby proclaim the month of August as Emergency Management Awareness Month proclaimed on this eleventh day of August, twenty twenty-five. And it is fitting that along with this proclamation for Emergency Management Awareness Month that we have a county employee, an emergency management employee, that received a distinguished certification. So I'll ask Sunny Latta on board first.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Council, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor, particularly this month, to present our EM Coordinator, Corlando Glenn, with his certificate for completing Basic Academy at the South Carolina Emergency Center. But now we don't know, currently hired as a firefighter from Spartanburg City about a year ago, but he continues to serve his community, have his new community of Lawrence. Thank you.
If y'all wanna come forward, I'll get a picture with you. Proclamation. Come on, me and you. You hold yours up, or what? Next item is reports to Council, Interim Administrator, Kirk.
Yes, good evening, Council. So tonight, I'm pleased to welcome Carl Becker with Thomas and Hutton. They'll provide an update on the current status and projects, completion statuses of those capital project sale tax projects.
Good evening, Chairman and County Council. Appreciate the opportunity to provide an update to you on the sixteen capital projects we started out with after the referendum. The first of these projects is the Parks and Rec there, which consists of updating parks with picnic shelters, tables, chairs, also playground equipment. To date, several of the playgrounds, about four have been completed. And fourteen basketball goals and twenty-one picnic shelters have all been installed. The remaining work to be completed includes installation of two picnic shelters and twenty-five playground structures, which were Park and Rec will working to get completed by end of year next year. Clinton Regional Library, which is open business, at the end of April was the ribbon cutting on April the twenty-seventh. There's still a little bit of work being done to get final punch list items completed on the project. The basically scope of the work was an approximately twelve thousand square foot library. State of the art has a maker's space for some of us who are a little older. Went to the library and as always, you start talking and all of a sudden not would come from the library then there, but libraries have changed. And Ms. Barksdale certainly created a place that's really, really neat. But mildly, I wish I was a teenager again to be able to go. They have, Ms. Barksdale got a big grant from the state to be able to put in this maker's space that has things like 3D printing, virtual reality, many other things. Invite you to go down and see it if you have not already. Historic courthouse. This is the exterior renovation part that commenced a little over a year ago. The building, exterior building shell, windows, roof, and other things that were brought up to snuff in order to completely waterproof and preserve the building. Hopefully for many, many years to come, two-hundred-year-old building approximately. Right now, the exterior is part of the eight CPST. Right now, the interior of the project is being completed, which is under a different project going on with the county. But the plan is by the end of this year, hopefully around Thanksgiving, the outside will be fully completed with hardscaping, landscaping, and to be decorated out for Christmas. It'll be a beautiful landmark right in the downtown area of the city. Ag Center. Really should get Andy to talk about this one here, but we're getting very close on this. The initial part of this is the old exchange building that's been completely renovated. If you walked in and never saw the building to start with, it would look brand new in your eyes. Complete inside skin of the building exterior. On the back end of it is a tie barn area, which has set it up for animal exhibitions. And to be able to tie animals and keep them outside and as well as a host of other events that can be held there, weddings, parties, you name it. That building is to be complete. That part will be substantially complete within a few weeks of this month. In addition, the middle picture is of a horse barn, horse arena there for riding, competition. That part of the project is about eighty-five percent complete. Some remaining items are being completed on that. And the Clemson Extension Building, five thousand square foot building that's noted in the bottom picture is about ninety percent complete on the exterior. On the exterior, and they are working on getting the inside outfit. The plan is around fall. The last two items there to be complete. My understanding that there's gonna be an animal exhibition at the end of this month. So it'll be one of the first official functions that will be at the Ag Center. Found infrastructure project was for creating a new exit or new on-ramp to I- three-eight-five to help so bottleneck traffic in the area. This project's still ongoing. Middle of negotiations with the property owner, so that one will be to be continued. Stay tuned for future developments on that one. E-nine-one radio upgrades, that one was completed quite a while ago. All the county vehicles and all that was part of the referendum to be upgraded has been fully completed. About a year now, as a matter of fact. Lawrence County Airport, many of you are out there for the ribbon cutting for this one. Beautiful, brand-new, state-of-the-art terminal building. Has a lot of wonderful features inside. Beautiful conference room with a beautiful conference table that looks like a wing of an aircraft from World War II, fighting Tiger. So invite you to go out there as well and take a look at that, but terminal as well. So driveway improvements, the things that made up this one. That one was completed back in February of this year. Veterans Monument Memorial, which is located at Main Branch Library here in Lawrence. This was completed as well. It was back at the end of last year on November. Beautiful work of landscaping. Certainly a great tribute to all the military forces that are located here in the United States. A fitting tribute to them all, but it's beautiful place to go and contemplate fountain and all the landscaping there. Certainly very beautiful. Lawrence County Water Tower and Hickory Tavern. That one was completed a while back, too. There's a removal of an existing water tank there and replaced with a branded two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-gallon elevated storage tank. It's gonna help development in the area substantially. Boosting flow and pressure to the air. That will be a big help, development of that part of county in future days. Martha Denny Community Center. It's the renovation and outfit of the old school on Bell Street. Right now, the outside of the building has been completely brightened and redone, new windows. The interior of the building, right now, they're finishing putting in infrastructure, electrical, water, sewer to the building. The building will not be ready to open at the end, but this was the decision of the committee, steering committee that was appointed by County Council. And they're working to hopefully get more funding to get towards their goal of opening the facility at some time, but it is moving along and hoping to have that finished too by fall. EMS Medic, EMS Medic One renovation. Again, if you ever remember the original building, what is there now? You're wide-folded or like in one of those movies where they wave you and you lose your memory in that to go in. Beautiful, brand-new facility, state-of-the-art garage there for parking any EMS vehicles. And the brand-new paving, concrete paving in the back and front side drives is certainly gonna make it a wonderful place for the headquarters, EMS here in Lawrence County. Lawrence County Animal Shelter by Public Works. Out there, the existing building was completely gutted. Replaced inside lighting and flooring, HVAC, upgraded of electrical systems out there to be able to boost these new systems that were put in. Brand-new flooring, kennels for the animals. Really first-class looking out there. Nice place out there for the animals to be housed. Lawrence County Trails Association over near the hospital, Prisma Hospital. That was mostly constructed by Parks and Recreation. This is hoping that one day to be linked up as part of the Swamp Rabbit Trail. A nice loop trail there to go enjoy and walk and relax. Again, that's over by the Prisma Hospital. It were a tempero commerce locator. Down to Edcor. Build a brand-new, the single baseball field. And parking area, upgraded the entrance, exit drive to the facility there as well as a restroom concession stand building there. And plan was to build two, but of course escalated costs from the COVID and other things, reduced that down to one, but they had a ribbon cutting for the facility back in April of last year. This would be beautifully area for youth baseball, softball, and other things. Declin infrastructure. The, this is for water, sewer, paving, upgrades to the town of Clinton. And majority of all the paving projects has been completed already. One road left to be paved on their list. And remain water and sewer tie-ins. Also utility lighting around specifically around Presbyterian College. It will help there with safety for students. All the work for this work is gonna be completed by the end of next year. The final, I believe is the final one, yeah, is the evidence storage facility over by the county jail. Brand-new state-of-the-art building. The filing system in there for to be able to preserve crucial evidence for for future use if needed in there, but it's certainly a tremendous upgrade from what I understand from the existing facility that the county had over there, both outside and inside as well. Great spot. That's the end of them. The majority of all the projects are gonna wind down probably by mid to late part of next year, and then probably the final, final part of this will be the infrastructure opening and to wrap up this round of the CPST. That's all I have.
You also have any questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Where the fence at around Asocostus Building? You got animals, you ain't got no fence.
Say that again.
Asocostus, Clemson, out there at the background, you ain't got no fence nowhere when you got animals.
Andy, can you, can you speak to that?
Yes, um, we will have where the animals are held inside the tie barn. We will have fences around the building itself, but where they're held, they will be tied in, so there won't be a way. I say there won't be a way. There's always a way.
I mean, it's always a way, but it ain't in the, in the plane.
No, but where they are kept, there will be fence in. But yeah, that's, of course, it's not complete yet, but it will.
But it, you know, they ain't showed me on no picture, no fence.
No, it's not there yet, but we're not done with it yet either.
The Martin Dennis Center.
Yes, sir.
How much money they need to finish up?
Approximately, we estimated to the architects that were working with us and the contractor estimated that if they had two-point-two million dollars, they could have finished the job. It's rising. From when this started to now, COVID saw an increase of anywhere from forty to sixty percent in the increase of cost for construction and materials.
So the penny sale tag didn't cover the building, yes or no?
No, it did not. It did not. It says covered, it said the exterior drawing into the building, facade, windows of the building envelope. It says if you go by there, it looks a beautiful building on the outside. And inside, they will have complete infrastructure for, they said water, sewer. They will have, in fact, the lights have already been installed, new gym lights at the gymnasium there. Final part is the electric work that's being completed, and then all that will be.
So that might have been allocated in the penny sale type to fit the building?
Well, it was.
I'm asking, sir.
It was.
Just having for my time, but I'm asking.
No, no, I'm saying, yeah, it was, it was so for the committee to be able to completely renovate, renovate the building. But that was not the case.
So.
Stretch that far.
So what I'm trying to get at is they need two point something million more dollars?
Uh, but not that much, about one, one point five, one point seven, yeah.
Still millions of dollars, sir.
Yes.
So what I'm trying to say is, where that money gonna come from?
There, the committee is working on that. They're looking at grants and other things to be able to do that. They realize that. They've used the money to the best way they thought to spend it, the building.
I'm trying to commit it, not good commit.
I can't speak to that.
Well, I'm just telling you, sir, if you got the money already allocated to you, you may show, if you already came into the county with all these tight people, you say that you needed two point five million dollars to fit that building. Two point five million dollars should have been already allocated to that, that building.
Well, they thought three-quarters of a million dollars, Mr. Wilson, was gonna cover, cover everything back.
When they submitted their budget, they only asked for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand because they thought that would do it. And when they started getting into it, they realized it was gonna be much further, but we had already finished the capital penny and it was already going, so they underestimated the amount that it would take.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? We appreciate that update. It's always exciting that you're, you're about.
Right, so next, I would like to issue a reminder about the special appropriation grant deadline that is quickly approaching. That deadline is August the fifteenth at five o'clock PM, so any grant applications would need to be received in our office by five o'clock PM on August the fifteenth. At that point, staff will start to come call and submit for council review on September first, and then council will have discussion at the regular scheduled council meeting on September ninth. Anticipating to be able to allocate those funds by September that they're available.
Council have any questions on what we just briefed? Awesome. Thank you. We are at our item for public comment. We have several people signed up. And we will start with Mr. Glenn Easter speaking on the moratorium.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman and County Council members, I do appreciate the opportunity to, to speak to you, and it's gonna be I'm coming probably from a different angle than, than many that you've heard from before. But I'm coming from the side of landowners in Lawrence County. And I do have a, I do have a prepared message here, and I may deviate at times because it's, this is up close and personal to us. Usually, I'm referred to as Maryland's other. Everybody knows Maryland. They don't know me. Uh, but I am Glenn Easter, and I have operated a dairy farm in Lawrence County for almost fifty years. Over these years, we have been very active in our community and agriculture. We have had the honor to serve on numerous local, county, state, and national boards. And we understand the importance of looking at an issue from all sides. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you from the perspective of a landowner in Lawrence County. As a dairy farmer, our lives do not follow the traditional path. We never had the opportunity for a 401K or a state retirement. Agriculture requires money made to be reinvested to survive and grow. However, land has always been a farmer's retirement for him. I've often heard in the past, I've often heard in the past farmers live poor and die rich. Because all our money is reinvested. If you're not growing in agriculture, you're dying. It is, it is an entire life cycle. And so as we try to figure out how to allow things to change and grow, I understand it's, it's not easy. In the last few years, we have seen numerous houses being built around us. A project of seven or eight, a project of six or seven, project of one. Those houses impact, impacted my farming practices. We never had the thought of going to the county and saying they don't have the right to exist. We knew these houses had a right to be there. And we conformed our farming practices to make it so we could coexist. And this is what I'm asking County Council is to allow Lawrence County to grow, Lawrence County to change, and we coexist. I have heard so many complaints over the last few years from residents in Lawrence County. Nobody could sell any land in this county. Am I running out of time?
Go ahead.
Nobody, nobody could sell any land in Lawrence County if you listed off all the things that people don't want. They don't want chicken houses. They don't want hog farms. They don't want they don't want houses. They don't want manufacturing. We have got to get to somewheres where we can coexist. Growth is difficult. It requires change, and many people will say, and I heard this one just last night in a restaurant in Spartanburg County. People I didn't know, but I was standing just with them off to the side as we were waiting to get seated, and they were waiting to get seated. And one of the fellows in that group talking to his group of six or seven people. You know, we don't like things the way they are. But we don't like change either. But we don't like change either. And I thought that pretty well sums up, uh, the problem we find ourselves in. In agriculture, we couldn't stop growing. Change was the only way to survive in Lawrence County and Lawrence County must grow and change in order to survive, just like we did in agriculture. We must respect our landowners rights, just like those who build around us, that we respected their rights. Lawrence County wants new restaurants. They want new stores. They want better infrastructure. But the system cannot sustain, cannot sustain that, um, upgrade without people to support them. We need housing. We ask that you please consider the landowner's perspective as you vote on this proposal tonight.
Go ahead and finish up for me, Mr. East.
What?
Go ahead and finish up for me.
Okay, uh, I think, I think I can close with that. We love Lawrence County. Lawrence is our, is our forever home. We will live beside whatever ends up on the farm. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Chris Leonard, ordinance nine eight.
Guys that see me before, thank you for having me again. So I'm here to speak in favor of the moratorium. Uh, basically for just a couple of reasons. One is this is only a portion of the ordinance. The other side of it, the conventional side is open for business. Nobody is disputing any of that. This is only a pause to try to fix the part of the ordinance that has a lot of loopholes, ambiguity and vagueness and just round and round rules. Gives you a chance to get fixed. Um, it doesn't preclude anybody else from submitting a conventional plan and moving forward. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Garrison, ordinance nine eight nine.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I'm just going to try to be brief and, and feel like to share my, I think the importance of passing this moratorium. I think would allow the county staff, the need to time, uh, not only to make suggestions to the amendments to the open space ordinance portion, but it may also give them a little chance to go through the possible other contradictions the ordinance may have. I'm just going to give one example of that, uh, for time's sakes. If the ordinance nine twenty-six makes reference to our future land use map multiple times that we don't have because it's not included in our newest comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan talks about the importance of the future land use map and says it's included in the chapter, but it's definitely not in there. So I don't think it's a good idea that the ordinance, you know, makes reference to something that, that we don't have in place at the time. And like I said, that's just one example. So maybe this will give the county staff more chance to even look at some other aspects of the ordinance during this time. The moratorium may also give county staff time to learn more about our policies, procedures and the ordinance so that they can be properly followed. And something else we've learned through our zoning task force that we've been going in and listening to the different communities so far, uh, and the different districts that, you know, nobody, including myself, is against growth. I mean, we're not, we're not against the county growing and thriving and, and moving forward, not against property owners selling their property and being able to thrive from that. Um, that's not it. It's just the growth that we've seen in the past and how it's been handled and looking for, forward to the future. And, and hoping that these changes can continue to be made for that futures to continue to be better. And I think that's just the importance of this moratorium is as we move forward, we know growth, growth is going to continue and that it needs to be done cross plan. Thank you.
Ashley Riddle, ordinance ninety nine.
Thank you very much, Council. I am speaking to ninety nine moratorium. Um, I want to thank Ms. Clark for her prayer. Pray for wisdom. I too pray for wisdom for the council and I thank you for your service. Um, I am a member of the zoning task force and to many meetings, the vast majority of the people that speak up, that show up there are very concerned about the rapid pace of track home. Uh, we've got but one chance to get this right. It's, it's happening so fast. Uh, we are concerned about our rural areas. Landowners absolutely have a right to sell their property. We're not asking for zone or, uh, growth to stop. We're asking for an opportunity for your and our planning commission to do the job that they, they want to do. We were present at the vote the night the planning commission, uh, voted for this. I believe, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, it was unanimous. That's your planning commission asking for the, for Tory. But please keep that in mind. Please stay the course. And, um, let's, let's, uh, give them an opportunity to fix the loopholes and to tap the brakes a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan Anderson on the moratorium.
Name of the county members. Our county is at a crossroads. Growth is coming quickly. And while it can bring opportunity, it also straining our roads, schools, water systems, emergency services and the very character of our rural communities. Too often this cost of strain is falling on current taxpayers. While developers walk away having paid little toward the impact of the project spread. We've all seen what happens when growth is poorly managed. Buy rights zoning and annexation gains allow high density builds without public review. Developers divide land to avoid environmental traffic studies. Adjacent property owners are left in the dark and public hearings are scheduled when working families can't attend. In 2022, Lawrence County had to enact a subdivision moratorium after lawsuits over transparency. And it's not just notice, it's pressure. Developers donate to campaigns, threaten lawsuits and exploit gaps in our land use codes. Environmental rules are skipped, wetlands filled, stormwater protections ignored, leading to flooding, damaged roads and flooded waterways. Meanwhile, our infrastructure is breaking under the load. Roads like Durbin Road and Highway fourteen are already overburdened. Schools are near capacity and without developer impact fees, taxpayers are paying the consequences of unchecked growth. We need a better system. I'm proposing the county growth and infrastructure trust fund, a dedicated transparent account where all developer and new home buyer impact fees are collected, tracked and used only for infrastructure tied directly to growth. Here's how it works. All fees go into it to separate interest bearing trusts legally restricted for roads, schools, sewer and water, power grid upgrades, public safety facilities and parks. Developers pay a predictable per unit fee with exemptions of affordable housing, veteran owned developments and distressed areas. First time home buyers could see a reduced or waived fees in them. Transparency through all, through an online public dashboard showing every dollar in and out. Citizen input, once a year residents vote on which eligible projects get funded first. Council is bound to hold those results. Independent quarterly audits ensure the process stays clean and accountable. The benefits are clear. Developers gain certainty and can market homes in a county that's proactively improving its infrastructure. Residents, residents get a voice and a guarantee that the road, schools and services will keep pace with growth. The county avoids expensive reactive fixes year, years after problems arise. Other counties in South Carolina like Beaufort have used impact fees successfully. But here in Lawrence County, we've seen the alternative overloaded roads, stretched schools, lost farmland and neighborhoods left with unfinished infrastructure. Council members, this is not an anti-development measure. It is responsible development. It ensures that growth pays for growth and it does so in full public view. I'm asking you to close the loopholes that let project bypass oversight, enforce environmental protections, require impact fees and put those funds into a transparent trust that the public can see and help direct. Let's protect our roads, our schools, our environment and our history while still welcoming the right kind of growth. Let's get the standard for sustainable transparent development in South Carolina. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Casey Robinson, nine eight.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, real quick, I'll just address your question. We do have an agenda item coming up later on agenda, um, to introduce if passed the resolution for our planning commission to do an impact study.
Okay. Next item is old business. Our first item under old business is approval for appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Are there any council submissions for any openings? We do have, um, two recommendations from the Greens Board. They are Bertha Rice and Janice Robertson to fill the two positions that they, um, recommend and we approve. But with that recommendation, is there a motion to approve Bertha Rice and Janice Robertson to the Greens?
I approve him, but I had two names submitted also.
Within a second, the other discussion. And where did, Mr. Wilson, just for under clarification, where did you submit those names?
My secretary.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, okay.
You can go ahead.
Let's, let's get, let's take action on this. We got a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving Bertha Rice and Janice Robinson for the Greens Board, please raise your hand. Six zero. Okay. So which, um, appointments does Mr. Wilson have?
We wait to name one again.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for, for understanding that. Old Business section, second item is the third reading of ordinance nine eighty-nine, moratorium on open space developments in Lawrence County. Is there a motion to approve on third read? Have a motion, there a second?
Sure.
Motion's second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, this ordinance has kept my mind pacing back and forth the past couple of months. Uh, I've sat on the yes side and I've sat on the no side. Uh, when I ran to this office, I thought about the people I went to high school and college with, most of them spent their entire lives raised here, uh, but yet graduated and chose somewhere else to live. You know, on one side of this moratorium, I want to preserve Lawrence County, what, what they value most be our farmland and our rural character. And on the other, I want those same friendly classmates to be able to come back home to Lawrence County to live, work, play and pray and be able to afford it. I can tell you firsthand from buying a home recently, if you go on Zillow to look in the range, uh, for a first time home buyer, you're in far between. Just some quick statistics real quick. From two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, Lawrence County just by census numbers grew by one thousand and two people over ten years. Since two thousand and ten to today, fifteen years, our estimated population growth is about four thousand one hundred and eighty people. We aren't growing in this county, we're dying. I know we all see the growth on the interstate. I too don't want growth coming beside my family's farm where I live now. You know, I ran, I ran on smart growth. I want to stand behind that promise, but smart growth doesn't mean putting a gate up on every road in Lawrence County and saying the more. It's like locking your front door because you're, I heard that somebody's going to knock. There are no current active open space developments in the Lawrence County pipeline. If there were, the county has sixty days to respond to those. I don't see a need to tell the world.